I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today is May 10th. We had, and I'll take a moment and kind of explain a little bit where we are. We had a public hearing that was scheduled for the season for the re-establishment of the Cumulif Capital Development Fund. This is a property tax levy that has been around for decades, I've been told, at least since the eighties. And the plan, based on financial advice from REED Financial, who is our financial advisors, they work with us to ensure financial health for the city and operational expenses that we incur each year. I know there's been a lot of discussion surrounding property taxes and how that works. As everyone is aware, we are duly required to do public notices well in advance. The conversation surrounding the CumCap Development Fund was to reset the levy from four point six, four point, point four four three, so less than five cents, to five cents per hundred, the difference being point zero zero five seven, or less than six tenths of a penny. That conversation has generated a lot of feedback, and we, in consultation with Council President, have opted to leave that alone. We're not going to re-establish it. It will stay as is. And I know there's also been a lot of discussion about assessed values. The assessments are done by the county assessor. The city of Greensburg does not do assessments. So, two things. One, there is no public hearing this evening, and two, it is on this agenda, but it will not be discussed, voted on, changed. Nothing will be any different tomorrow than it was yesterday. Okay?
I would take two of motion to amend the agenda to remove the item.
Amy, probably start the meeting first.
Yes.
Okay. Today is Tuesday, May 10, 2022, the time being 6:30 PM. The Greensburg City Council has called a order at this time. Please silence all electronic devices to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. The city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that's available on the table in the back of the room. At this time, I'd take a motion to amend the agenda to remove ordinance 2022-07.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Vieta, second by Jamie. Amy, please call to roll.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Amy, would you please do roll call?
Kevin Fleetwood.
Rick Answeller.
Here.
Vieta McKenzie.
Here.
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Daryl.
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from April 12, 2022. Any edits, additions, or corrections? If not, I'd take a motion to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Daryl, second by Kevin. Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
First item, Chief Nathan Stermer, authorization for DLZ. This is a continuation of last month's conversation.
Good evening, council. In your package, you should find a copy of the professional services agreement with DLZ of Indiana. I have sent this to our legal counsel for review, and he's had a chance to look at it, and everything was copacetic.
Yeah, everything was good.
So, it was just their standard practices. We left last, left last this conversation, excuse me, with, you know, needing to offer some funding to get this started. They offered and have worked in good faith with us through the first two task, and now have submitted to us a professional services agreement in the total of seventy-five, seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. And with that seventy-five thousand dollars, that gets us to a point that will allow the contractor to then give us a guaranteed maximum price. So what this is doing is, this is getting us programming, conceptual design, codes, and starting to look at land, land quality, surveying, and things like that. So it was tabled last month as not to give a blank check, and Council President Kane wanted to know what we were getting for our money, so we inquired with DLZ to make sure we could answer those questions. And so your packet should have that information in there. So I do ask tonight that we approve a lump sum not to exceed seventy-five thousand.
Any question?
Jamie, does that seem to address what you were talking, asking about last month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to enter into the agreement with DLZ.
I'll make motion.
Motion's been made by Rick, second.
All right.
Second by Daryl. Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Up next, under Old Business, last month, we did a naming of a private street out on the Veterans Way corridor. Mr. Whitaker, who's the developer of that, is asked for some time this evening. Mr. Whitaker, podium is yours.
I submitted the name for the road that we're on, Progress Road, and I'd just like to have the council to take their vote on it. I'm to the understanding that you have to approve the name that I picked, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Is that, is that correct? That we have to approve after we talked about it and approved the street name last month? Wouldn't that have to be undone?
Well, I believe that that is what, the action that was taken last time was a motion to approve the name of that street as, I believe, Military Way.
Military Drive.
Military Drive, that's what it was. So I do believe that what Mr. Whitaker is asking is for this body to make a motion to rename it Progress as he's requested.
My motion, or my request, is that you vote on what I submitted. I in no way, shape, or form submitted Military Drive.
So just a question or comment, I guess. I know last month, we usually send our packets out at least a week in advance, and Ron, if he's there, maybe he can address the difference here, but Ron had mentioned, by the time we were sending packets out, he had no name for the road that we were voting on, and so he suggested a name, and he mentioned, I think, on Monday, prior to the meeting on Tuesday, he got your request, Jeff. So he didn't get your request until the Monday, the day before the meeting. At that point in time, we've already got packets out, we're trying to get information, and if we'd have brought it to the meeting with no name to even suggest, it would have possibly been delayed or not even happened at all. So Ron was trying to do what he thought was right in that situation. He'd reached out for a request from you, and just, Ron, if he's there, correct me, but I...
The last part of what she said cut out, Jamie.
He just mentioned that he had not gotten the report, the name request, until the Monday prior to our meeting.
Eric sent it to him Monday before the meeting. I didn't know that you needed it a week before to look at it or to get it ready. I thought it was as simple as me showing up, even if I would have came last month, and saying, this is what I, this is the name that I've submitted to be voted on.
Can I comment? I'd also add that even though he came in at, you know, the day before, I still feel like Ron should have at least mentioned to the property owner that he had suggested another name. Now, I'm looking at this, and I'm putting myself in Mr. Whitaker's shoes. So, it's, you know, nobody, nobody told Mr. Bruce Hall what he could name all his streets years ago when he was building his housing division. Nobody told him what he could name his streets. The simple fact of the matter is this: I don't feel like Mr. Mays did his job. For one, the name that was presented by Mr. Whitaker should have been the only thing that was voted on, whether it be, I don't care if it would have came in at six o'clock prior to the meeting. I don't think it was, I don't think it was right of the engineer to just suggest another name without running it past the property owner. That's just common courtesy. So I would make a motion that we strike naming the street Military Drive, and we vote on the name that Mr. Whitaker wants to name the street.
Oh, I think, just real quick, before we vote on anything, the one thing I think we need to make clear is the extension of Memorial Way was something I think we all agreed on, how that extends, so we need to, we need to maintain that name, and then this would be the rest of that road that we'd be talking about naming, just to reduce confusion.
Do you have an issue with that, Mr. Whitaker?
Where are you going? The road is continuous. When do you want to stop it? Start over?
Where, where it kind of turns, when it starts to make the turn to the, I think, the right, if I'm picturing the map. But if you're continuing on Memorial Way, then the road would turn to the right. Where that makes that turn, then that would be the distinguishing point, where we'd separate Memorial Way versus Progress Drive or Military Drive, whatever it is that we're going with.
Can I elaborate a little bit more on something? The other thing that I thought about too is, there's a lot of property out there for sale, and they were talking about different things like, you said, keeping in the theme of the military, or whatever. So, does that mean that when people buy property, you have to say, excuse me, but if you put a street in, you put a road in, you're going to have to call it Army, Army Way, or Navy Drive, or Marine something, or some kind of military name? Now, I don't think that's good business to tell somebody who's going to build a road what, you know, that they can own, or buy property, that they could, you know, they have to name a road a certain name to, to buy the property. I'm, and I'm looking...
And I don't think that's what we said, Vieta, but I think Ron was just trying to give a...
Question?
Hold on. Say that again.
I, I said, I think Ron was just trying to...
I'm, I'm good with splitting it, but I think that if we do that, it should be where the driveway would go into the lot that's on the right, which would be the eventual hotel. And then it would do a road cut to the left, so it essentially creates an intersection. And that's what makes sure that's agreeable.
I think in response to what you just said, Viya, that might be, I, I, I don't think we want the whole area out there to be Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines.
Daryl, could you please talk a little bit?
I'm sorry. I think just that area right there, to me, when we voted, it made sense to call it Military Way because of the flags, because of that area, and, you know, that's why I agreed to, to go with Military Way.
Well, the only reason I did not agree initially was because the property owner didn't know about it. It's just that simple. Another name was brought in without contacting the property owner, so.
You did contact.
And I'm looking further. I'm looking further than my nose. Something could happen.
I could appreciate that, yeah. I just kind of want to throw my thoughts out on that particular issue.
Jamie, were you good with what I said or not?
I, I absolutely, I had no objections, I, one way or the other. If we decide we want to name it Progress Drive, I think that's fine. I, I just think that the initiative of Military, or the extension of Memorial Way, I think we want to keep that, like we mentioned last month, just because it made sense. I'm trying to picture where you're talking about the cutout, though, Jeff, and maybe I'm not.
Well, as you, as you come around the corner to the right, where you're talking about, but I want to put it at the driveway.
Okay.
Just in the middle of the road somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you intend for the addressing then to be what would be Memorial or the new version, whatever the new street name is? Or would your address be Memorial?
Where, which location, for like the...
The hotel.
I, I don't know, I mean, you're going into the same property with two streets. I guess, I guess the majority of the property, because where the drive is cut in, is at the far east end of the property, so the majority of the property lies on Memorial, if we take Memorial to the driveway. So, I guess it would be a Memorial address, and that would be the last one.
And I think, so that's just part of the conversation about 911-ing this versus this on a curve?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, and I think if there's a, there's two drives crossing each other, it gives some sort of, you know, a stop and a change, so.
Jamie, do you consider your comments about keeping Memorial to that demarcation zone and then changing to, as Vieta has proposed, to, did you want to propose Progress, or you just want to remove Military?
I couldn't, I couldn't, I mean, promotion was...
Mission was to strike and rename it as Progress.
I made a, I made a motion.
I think also part of the discussion was a Memorial that right now it stubs off. I mean, it's really not, it doesn't really go anywhere, there's nothing, but if it got, even if it got extended farther beyond where the curb cut would be for Progress or...
Well, I mean, it's, there's no, I don't own any property to the west of that. The thing after my property is a flood zone, so.
I'm talking north.
Yeah, well, it's, the interstate is eventual, but...
Yeah. At one point, that road is either going to stop, or it might go farther north, then it would maintain the Memorial all the way to eventually would...
Is it likely?
My intentions were that we put, that the road that I put in and everything else is a driveway going to whichever lot, whether it's a 20-acre lot, a 10-acre lot, or a 30-acre lot.
So you're taking Memorial to stop where you want it?
I was saying, rather than just stop in the middle of the road somewhere, at least stop it at two drives that cross Memorial, Progress, whatever. So if there's some point of actual end, if you would, end of stop sign.
So the amended motion on the floor, Jamie, you consider yours an amendment to that motion?
Well, I'm guessing, could we make the motion instead, to make the motion to change Military Drive to Progress Drive? Or was it Progress Road? I want to make sure I...
Road.
Progress, not, Road.
Progress Road, yeah.
Progress, so change Military Drive to Progress Road, and then basically we, we settled out where all that was in the last month in the meeting, so it would just be changing that. Would that be acceptable?
Good. So I, okay. You still have, you still have a motion, so yours is a motion to amend the motion, correct?
Well, or we could strike the motion and just make a new motion. Would that be simpler, to say, we want to change Military Drive to Progress Road?
Then what I would suggest you do is call for a second on her motion. When one doesn't show up, then do his motion.
There's a motion on the floor to strike Military and replace with Progress. Is there a second?
The motion is defeated, having had no second. Now, do you?
Now we make the motion, I guess I thought that maybe it's that's the same thing. I'll make the motion that we change Military Drive to Progress Road, the name of Military Drive to Progress Road.
Second.
Can I make a comment before we vote?
Yes.
I have no problem with Progress Road, but I cannot in good conscience take Military Way away. It may seem, I know we have an issue here, that, an oversight, but we voted on Military Way, and I just, I won't support this.
Any other comments? Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Vieta. Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. We have two second readings. Ordinance 2022-08 is amendment to 21-10, some updates to the Gulf Car ordinance. Second and final, any other questions? If not, I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Second item is 2022-09, amendment to 2019-40, similar concept for UTPs. Take a motion to...
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Okay. We move to new items. Wastewater Superintendent Zeke Smith is here this evening for a discussion and information purposes regarding MS4 stormwater regulatory changes and requirements. Good evening.
Good evening, council, mayor. Before I get started, does everyone have this MS4?
I don't have a hard copy. I have it on my computer.
I got it. There you go. You're memorized it.
Before we go over some documentation regarding MS4 and the BERC Engineering continuation contract, we currently have a contract with BERC Engineering, essentially helping assist in the MS4 roles and responsibilities. IDEM has recently came down with some changes, updates, mandates regarding MS4 roles and responsibilities, and I have BERC Engineering here. Lori Gates with me, but tonight she's going to essentially explain what some of that means, and get you guys kind of up to date. So with that, I'll give you the floor. Lori, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Just wanted to explain a little bit about what IDEM is doing with this municipal separate storm sewer system program. Greensburg has been subject to this Clean Water Act permit from IDEM since 2003. The state of Indiana EPA has been waiting for a second version of this permit for quite some time. IDEM started working on this in 2017, under pressure from EPA. They were supposed to have updated this permit every five years, but had trouble doing that because it was in the Indiana Administrative Code, so they changed the way now that they issue these permits. So I have a new permit that was effective December 18th from IDEM, and so to help explain what all is included, what all has to be done by the city with this program, we brought this large implementation sheet. It explains, up at the top, there is, there are certain permit documents, reports, that have to be included with this, application, there are several reports, plans, so a lot of heavy lifting initially with the permit there. The application, which is your notice of intent, is due on July the 5th, and then the permit compliance schedule goes from there. Staff have to have new training requirements, and then underneath that starts the six, they call those minimum control measures, or the elements that the city has to implement. So there's a public education component, there's an illicit discharge component. Illicit for a separate storm system means anything that is not composed entirely of stormwater. A separate storm pipe, a ditch is included with this. None of these conveyances go to a wastewater treatment plant, so therefore they're connected directly to a receiving water body. So the idea is to keep the pollutants out of the stormwater. Also, the community has to do a construction program to control erosion sediment control. It has to meet the minimum requirements of the state's permit as well, but implemented on a local level. So you have an ordinance for that, as well as a program to inspect and enforce post-construction, or those practices that treat stormwater after the site is built, that's also part of the ordinance. New inspections are required for that, and then also the good housekeeping requirements for your municipal operations. So any facility that you have that has some type of maintenance, chemical storage, all of those have to be included with inspections, and then also plans to address those pollutants. So that's the gist of the, the updates there. I've also included a summary of the schedule, that's the eight and a half by 11 document there, with the updated due dates from IDEM. Even though the permit was effective on December 18th, the state was having issues with the state form, so IDEM has pushed back the due date, so that state form is now available, and we're working on that as well. Any questions on that?
Could you talk a little bit about how, you know, the city of Greensburg's been under this since 2003? We come in with this new permit from the state. Why the change, or what's driving that?
So part of the change is, this is a Clean Water Act permit. Normally, they are required by EPA to be updated every five years, so since IDEM hasn't been able to keep up, there was, they had more pressure put on them by EPA to, hey, you've got to get not only your permit updated, you need to change the method that you issue these permits. So instead of being part of Indiana Administrative Code, subject to the Environmental Rules Board, it's now, they have an enabling rule that allows them to do this outside of the process. So it's just a quicker, more expedited process, and then the expectation's been set by EPA, IDEM, you have to update this permit every five years. The way these Clean Water Act permits work is, every subsequent five-year cycle, you have more enhanced, more stringent requirements over time.
There was a pretty large expansion of communities this year, right?
Absolutely. So there have been 185 municipalities with permits covered in the state of Indiana. IDEM just released an additional list of 45. There are counties on there, towns, cities, as well as, there are some universities, campuses that are on there as well. So the program as to who's in, who's out, is based on urbanized areas, census bureau maps, as well as population size and some other criteria that they have.
Does anybody have any questions for Lori? I have one. How do you typically see these MS4 programs managed?
Typically, and it's always up to the community, but in this case, historically, with Greensburg, it's been under the wastewater utility that's common, we see that. Within wastewater utility, then, they'll typically have an MS4 coordinator position, they call it. You can imagine, in looking at all these different requirements, that person is called a coordinator, because while they do the heavy lifting, we'll say, on most of the program, they can't do it all by themselves, because several departments are affected. So typically, what they will do is coordinate information, you have to do a lot of data tracking, and so all that is handled through the MS4 coordinator. Sometimes they will also hire additional inspectors or public educators, just depending on the needs for the particular community. If you have an opportunity for a local partnership with an entity, perhaps, that is doing some of these things already, that's a great way to save some resources there. But typically, additional staff are needed by a community to do this.
And this sheet is an annual requirement?
Correct.
Everything has to be done on here each year?
Correct. Either, either developed or updated, yes.
And there are things on here that require multiple visits, so like a construction site would require mul, it's one line, but each construction site would require multiple visits?
Correct, and it's outlined in the permit how often the city must inspect those sites and at what phase during the construction process. The other new one is, requirement is for communities to start inspecting what they call these post-construction practices. So these are things like, say if you'd have a retention, detention pond for an existing development, or you have maybe some type of infiltration, well, now the city has to have not only a legally binding agreement to ensure long-term maintenance, they have to inspect on that as well. So that's a big addition for most communities as well, that they haven't typically been doing.
It's a lot of information. Lori and her team are going to work with the city for this year to make sure that we hit the boxes for the first year, but it's really a conversation we're going to have to have about what's the plan going forward, because I assume you don't expect the requirements to get less.
Absolutely not, no.
And do you expect them to go away?
No. It is, once you're in this program, you're in.
And how does one get in the program?
Initially, Greensburg was brought in because of population, yeah.
So we can't get out of it?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just getting all the questions.
Not unless a lot of people move out of the city.
Good try.
Anything else for Lori or Zeke? Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zeke. Up next, Fire Chief Nathan Stermer. We've got an announcement from the Board of Works and an invitation, so good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Council, Mayor. So at the Board of Works meeting, we awarded the contractor to the developer for the fire station. So after meeting with multiple contractors, six to be exact, three were shortlisted to bring back for an additional interview. Then of those top three, then two more were given supplemental further questions to help give us a selection, and it comes with the recommendation of the Fire Station Committee made up of members of the Board of Works, this council, as well as the Fire Department and the Redevelopment Commission.
Right.
We selected GM Development as the developer for the project, along with Meyer Nation as the construction manager, and I have Dan Lawson here from Meyer Nation with us tonight.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Lawson. I'm Executive Vice President and Partner with Meyer Nation Construction Company, and just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this project. We love fire station projects. We love what they do, what they're for, and it's been nice seeing the passion of the committee here for your people in Greensburg. So like I said, we're looking forward to working with all of you, and it's going to be a great project.
Thank you, Chief.
And so what this does, this allows us to work towards a scoping period, in and through a scoping period, which then will allow us to come up with a guaranteed maximum price for the project, which is then transferred into a vote on bond, and issuing the bonds for that project. So this is a step forward. There are still, there is still one major out, obviously, so this is not committing us to anything more than picking the architect or picking the developer. So as we go through with this, again, this is just more forward progress, but yet there's still other decisions that still have to be yet made. Second thing is, I did send, oh, sorry.
Any questions, Chief, for Dan on that?
Second thing is, invitations were mailed out or emailed out last week, but I want to personally invite everybody to our department's recognition ceremony this year. It'll be held tomorrow night at 6:00 PM in the multipurpose room here at City Hall. We will be recognizing first responders who, in two separate incidents, worked cardiac arrest and brought those people back from clinical death to walking out of the hospital and surviving. So they will get to meet their rescuers tomorrow night and get a chance to say thank you, as well as we will recognize them. And the department has brought back the firefighter of the year, which is nominated by peers and then voted on by the peers, and those individuals, that individual didn't be recognized as well. So we have that coming up tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. We'd be happy if you could join us. Thank you.
Commissioner Kloster Camper was unable to be with us this evening. At the Board of Works meeting, three announcements were made as relates to the Part of Works part of this project for consideration. One being contractor was Runabomb Construction, Shelbyville, developer GM Development, and Veritas, who would be the owner's rep, and David Rainey is here this evening with us again. He was here last month for the fire project. We're just getting them all in sync and moving forward. Again, same concept. We're just getting to the scoping period. There are different contractors. Runabomb builds pre-engineered metal structures. Meyer Nation builds specialty buildings. Having one developer, GM Development, will help us achieve the most large-scale, site-specific savings through economies of scale. So that's how all the players kind of fit together. Any questions on that? Okay. If not, we'll move to Building Commissioner Sarah Hamer for an update to amend various zoning code provisions. And Sarah, this was something that came out of the workshop that the BZA and Plan were a part of a couple weeks ago, right?
Yes, a few weeks ago, we had a training workshop with our BZA Board and Plan Commission, and we are in the process, as you saw in your packet, of developing a unified development ordinance for all our zoning codes and subdivision control ordinances. As KK with the planning workshop, who is working along with Structure Point, the development of that, as she was reviewing our zoning codes, came across a lot of things that we were not doing properly. So we wanted to get that fixed now so that we can move forward with approval of things through the BZA until that UDO is developed. So in your packet were the changes, the markups that KK with Planning Workshop did, to bring it up to me, some state statutes and that kind of thing as well. So I had Chris review all of it. We developed this ordinance with all the changes. So if there's any questions?
We take a, entertain a motion to approve 2022-10.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Kevin?
Second.
Second by Vieta, Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Could we suspend the rules on that one, or?
Trying to remember if any of them change-
I was trying to-
-change fees or costs.
I don't think fees or costs were changed in anything.
Because it's mostly just language.
Mostly just language and naming, and it's not adding anything, so yes, I believe you can suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules.
Second.
2022-10.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Vieta, Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
I'd make a motion. We pass 2022-10 on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin, Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Up next, Donna Lecker, Utilities Manager, for a point of information on the utility bill first of the month. Good evening, Donna.
Good evening. Thank you. As you all are most likely aware, we've had a little glitch with our billing software and had to resend all of the statements out. We had a problem with two different parts of it. There was a connection fee, a reconnect fee, that was marked as a penalty. So on all the bills, the penalty amount would have had an extra $40 included in it. So we didn't realize that until the bills were out. The second part was part of estimating. When we started our system, March 1, implementing, we did not do disconnects or anything, or anything. We had to estimate approximately 700 bills. Then when it was time to true up those with this month's bill, it disregarded that estimated bill and overbilled like 700 customers. So we had to redo, of course, recalculate. The program was fixed and resend bills. We sent out two different one-call-now notifications explaining the process, and hopefully everything's good to go now. It's been a while, but yeah, it's good. It's going to be good. A lot of confusion for everybody, I'm sure.
Donna and Dory came in on the holiday and worked overtime to get it done, and the whole team responded really well to phone calls and emails.
They've been fantastic, so, anyway.
Unfortunate issue with new software.
It was, yeah. It all comes out at some point, so hopefully that's it, and we'll be good to go.
Any questions for Donna?
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Up next, Clerk Treasurer Amy Burns. Ordinance 2022-11, which is the establishment of electronic funds transfer.
Yeah, so this, I would like to start putting some of our monthly payments on ACH, and this is just kind of a way to, I just wanted to make sure that this was written in an ordinance fashion and that it was approved so that I can move forward with doing that. That way, there's no getting things, we've had some bills get hung up in the mail and be late, even though they were mailed on time, and things like that, and this will hopefully take care of some of those, especially utility payments.
Okay. Mostly administrative, any-
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions for Amy on that? If not, we entertain a motion to approve 2021-11, 2022-11.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Daryl?
Second.
Second by Vieta, Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
We'd be interested in suspending the rules on that one as well.
I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules on 2022-11.
Second. Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We pass 2022-11 on the second reading.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda for discussion. In your packet, you should have received a copy of a land purchase agreement. This is for a property that has not been signed on by the seller yet, but we have reached negotiated terms, as I explained in your memo. There are two things that are important to note. The agreement allows us access to the property in the meantime to do topographical surveys, our teams to go and start looking and doing preparatory work, which is needed to get us to the guaranteed maximum price. It also does not take effect until the bond is approved, so there is no requirement to purchase until the bond is solidified. But by having a signed purchase agreement, it gives us rights to access the property. It also secures the property in a legally binding way that it is ours. I've spoken to the other party's attorney. They are mutually agreeable to almost all terms, and so my request to you is that you approve the purchase agreement that I can sign barring any substantially legal differences that we arrive at, whether that, we don't want to be here in a month because we changed the "the" or something not really important happened. Chris is the one who drafted the document. Everybody's been reviewing it. I just don't want us to delay a month on site access unnecessarily. Any questions? If not, we take a motion to do what I just said.
I have a question. Me? Who is the question?
Oh, okay, yes, sir.
Say, you want to have them? Dan Manis, citizen, retired. My question is, if you decide not to use that property and you go ahead and bond, can you go to another property, or are you tied into this property if you go ahead and say yes tonight? I mean, is there a tie that you, can you get out of it? I mean-
Well, it is contingent upon, so the contract is contingent upon both bond approval and ultimate approval by the council. So presumably, I believe your question is if you sign the agreement and then you go forward with the bond, but in the interim, some other property were to come available that was equally well-suited.
Or you find a problem with that property.
Well, if you find a problem with the property, it's different.
Then it's already available.
Yeah, then it's already, it is built into the contract that if the property is not suitable, or otherwise can't be used for that purpose, then, then you can't go forward with it. I don't believe that you would be able to simply get out of the contract because you found another place that you liked better. But if you did not meet the contingencies that are in the contract, then you certainly could.
Right, but the other way, you couldn't. So we're pretty well tied to this piece of property.
Well, you're tied to the piece of property assuming that it meets all of the contingencies. So it's similar to really any, any purchase, real estate purchase agreement that would be contingent upon like financing or contingent upon something like that. There's, there's not a, there is a contingency based off of approval by the council to move forward with the project and based upon receiving bond approval to pay for it.
Just, hey, Dan, also to help with your question, I think there was a study done, and the Fire Chief could speak more to it even, but this was the property of land that was identified as the most feasible for if we were going to build another station, where would we want to put it ideally? That way, we separated where Station 1, Station 2, we're covering. So this was kind of identified as that key location, so that which helped us drive to that property.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one, if I may.
Sure.
Mark Rosell. My question is, the city owns 50 acres already on that end of town. I'm guessing that this other, I don't even know where this new property is, but according to what I've been told, there's 25 acres in Lumplott, 15 and 10 that we own, what I still call Smith Road, that's owned by the city of Greensburg. Was that property considered since we already own it instead of buying new dirt? Thank you.
Yes, it was considered in the study that Jamie mentioned. Counsel, any other questions? Would entertain a motion to proceed with the land purchase agreement as presented?
Make motion.
Motion's been made by Rick. Sir, second?
I'll second.
Second by Daryl, Amy?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Up next, we have the Board and Commissions' updates. Jamie, would you like to go first with Board of Works?
So Amy Kane, we approved a contract for the host system, the civic system host contract, which allows them to access the system from outside the building, basically, so they can access it from home. And then we also approved a civic system ACA self-insured reporting contract as well. We approved road closures for the bicentennial parade route, and then we got an update on the bicentennial activities. So if you go to visitgreensburg.com, you can get a list of all of those things. So good information. Fire Chief Kane spoke to us about the same thing he told us tonight, and then also we approved the destruction of some surplus property, basically some old radios that are not usable. The street park was on the agenda tonight to talk about the same things Josh mentioned for the street department, so nothing new there. Zeke Smith came and talked about, we approved task order number 22-01 with strand for the UV equipment, and then we also talked about the MS4. We entered into a contract with Burke Engineering to help us work through that, as they spoke about tonight. Josh brought up the land contract approval, and the Board of Works approved that as, basically gave a recommendation to approve that to the council. We talked about an east side trail expansion or extension, extending the trail over by Rebecca Park over to the public library, and then taking it over by the Carousel Library where the trail is, and trying to connect it to Lincoln Street. Basically, we've got some funding from the Decatur County Community Foundation. They've offered to pay for the study to make that happen, so we approved to make that happen, to approve to do the study. And then, sorry, and we talked about insurance, just a discussion on insurance, which I'm sure we're going to start hearing more about, especially during budget time. So I think that's everything, Josh.
Good. Rick, Main Street?
Main Street. Last month, we appointed five new members to the board, elected the officers. Josh Marsh is chairman of Main Street now. Farmer's Market should start this Friday, and the fourth Friday of the month should start either the end of this month or next month. What they're going to do is try to have specials on that Friday downtown, try to get merchants to have- to have special pricing or whatever they can do to bring people in downtown.
Kevin, anything from plan?
We do not have a meeting.
No meeting?
Okay.
May I have solid waste? No meeting. Daryl, economic, or I'm sorry, redevelopment commission?
Yes, the project is finished on, what we're talking about, my mind's kind of slow tonight, I'm sorry. The new TIV housing area, we have accepted or agreed to go with Beacon Homes. That housing area will be built in three phases. And we have named a committee to start a new project list for the redevelopment areas. And I'll just throw out to the council if there's any ideas that you would have or any suggestions of projects you would like to see put on that list. If you forward that to me, then I'll make sure that this committee gets it.
Quickly, a couple, animal control. They are looking for an animal control officer. If somebody's interested in that, I think the window for that application is still open, and they've been doing some good work out there. Water board, all is good with the new plant. The powder-activated carbon room is back online and working well. I know Rick and his team have re-